Tacoma Park City Council to order. Mayor Bruce Williams is not here this evening, and I'm Ruben Snipper and will be running the meeting, all right, guys, until he returns at about 8:30, so it won't be that long. Will the clerk please call the room?
Okay.
Or the assistant?
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Snipper.
Here.
Councilmember Sheehan.
Present.
Councilmember Schultz.
Does anyone know where Councilmember Clay is? Okay. I don't have any agenda items or scheduling update. Bruce usually does that, and he did not provide any for me, so we'll go right into the public comment period. Is there anyone who wants to comment on items on the agenda tonight?
It gets easier and easier.
It does get easier and easier. Is Pat coming in?
No, Pat is still out with his broken leg. He's now in the rehabilitation facility, and they're anticipating that may last and well into the holidays.
Then we'll turn to council comments. I'm just gonna...I didn't see how the lights go fast, so I'll start at this end. Councilmember Wright?
I just think we should endeavor to finish by 8:30 to show the mayor how it should be done.
I think that's an excellent idea. Councilmember Schultz?
Couple of things. This evening, probably sometime around, or late this afternoon, around between 5:30 and 6:00, a substantial fire broke out in Langley Park along University Boulevard, on the other side of University Boulevard, which I witnessed. And it seems to have pretty well destroyed, or deci-- you know, a three-story, fairly large garden apartment building up there. Flames were coming up through the roof while I was there, and the smoke was going up a couple hundred feet in the sky. And it was pointless to get any closer than I did, just because it was an awful lot of congestion along University Boulevard, just right off the, or just a hundred feet off the street. So, who knows? We'll find out in tomorrow's newspaper, I suppose, the extent of the damage, but it suggests to me, tells me pretty obviously, that there's going to be an awful lot of families who are going to need an awful lot of help with clothing and with household goods and furniture and all that sort of thing. And of course, the Red Cross is always on top of these things. That's their standard operating procedure, and I'm sure that there'll be Prince George's County Services and others providing services there for helping people find homes. So it's not going to be our primary responsibility, by any stretch of the imagination, but I think residents need to know that there is going to be, that this is an area where we can reach out and help some of our neighbors who are going to be in distress. I really had no idea how big a building it was. I know it was about three stories and probably had twenty, you know, or maybe it's four levels considering the lower levels. So it's an awful lot of apartment units there. So I just wanted people to know, have a little bit of a heads up on that. I have one question for you, Bob, which you pass on to the Department of Public Works. Last spring, the city hired Enterprise Information Solutions for the, to develop under contract a pavement condition index, which I gather was supposed to have probably been completed by now. And I don't know if it has, but what it was supposed to do, they were going to literally photograph the entire surface of every street and the curbs and gutters and sidewalks and signs along that street so that the two things, that the city would be able to have a sort of a GPS location for every piece of everything that was along the streets, but also be able to get a absolutely current, up-to-date picture of the condition of every street in the city, which then, of course, from my point of view, or any of the council members' point of view, would feed into the decision-making process of the priority of streets that need work and paving. So I was hoping maybe you could have Daryl Braithwaite get back. It's certainly not an urgent question, by any stretch of the imagination, but I'd be curious to know if it's completed and if there's been any chance to kind of interpret the information that's come in.
Sure. The last time Daryl and I had talked about it, it was substantially done. I think she and the city engineer were getting some instruction on some of the software nuances. We have talked in the past about once the study is complete, having the results presented publicly to the city council. I'll touch base with Daryl and then speak to the mayor during our agenda meeting tomorrow about trying to get that scheduled.
Okay, good. I want to, a couple of things, I want to remind my constituents in Ward Six, particularly in the New Hampshire Gardens area, or especially in the New Hampshire Gardens area, that this coming Tuesday, October 11th, the Department of Public Works is holding a public meeting at the Rec Center on New Hampshire Avenue to discuss the latest version of the engineering drawings for the proposed sidewalks in New Hampshire Gardens on Longwood Drive, Kirkland, Lochne, Kennewick, and some other smaller streets. So I encourage everybody to attend if you have an interest. Then finally, I have inherited a cold which I'm sure I got from the mayor, and it's gone the usual bit from sore throat to nasal congestion and now down into my bronchial area, so I have this compulsive need to cough every once in a while. And I ask nobody who's on the other end of the speaker here to suffer too much or have any shocks if I cough like crazy all of a sudden. I've got a pocket full of cough drops.
We didn't invite you down to the same address, but you probably just as well even made a mention.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly. That's why Colin's not here tonight so far, anyway.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright, do you have something?
Just wanted to again, as I've done in the previous... Thanks. I just wanted to again, as I've done in previous weeks, remind people about the Tacoma Foundation's Beer Fest, which is on October 15th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Katie Lee Mansion. You can go to many of the local businesses, including now and then, to buy tickets in advance, or you can buy tickets at the door.
Anyone else? Great. City managers' comments?
Just one brief item this evening. At your places this evening is a copy of a letter that I had sent by email to the council, and it occurred to me I probably should have just distributed it to you, just to make sure no one overlooked it. It was a letter from the city's auditors, just kind of going over some basic ground rules for the audit, and just as always indicating that they welcome meeting with any council member or any questions that you may have. We are starting to enter the sort of the final stages of the audit, so if you do have some interest in talking to the auditors about anything, expressing a concern about any matter, I would encourage you to call the auditors as soon as possible. I know they will be coming out here in the next week or so. I can get you the date to do their required interview with me, as well as with the finance director, so if anyone has an interest in meeting with them in person, I can also see if we can arrange that while they're out here, anyway.
Will they do their usual presentation when they're, after they're done?
Yeah, we actually, that would, it's been scheduled for, I believe it's the first meeting of the new council, I believe it's November 20...let's see, November 28th. I guess it's the second meeting of the new council. We usually try to start off the new councils, as well as just do it as soon as, before the council goes on recess, just to make sure you have that information. So that date has been set with the auditors.
We hope it's good news, of course.
We shall see.
I'm sure it will. Next, we have adoption of minutes.
Would like to move the minutes, second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously, great. We'll go into our regular meeting session. The first item is a first reading ordinance authorizing the installation of traffic calming measures on Hilltop Road. There's an opportunity for public comment. Do we have any public comment? Since you're in my ward, and I want to, you know, get a little credit for this.
Thank you, good meeting. Josephine Shuneau, 303 Hilltop, and I just want to thank you guys for your support. This has been a topic we've been talking about for quite a few months now, and I think we had some good discussions. We had a good public comment period and hearing, and looking forward to seeing this, along with the Safe Routes to Schools sidewalk project happen and produce a more walkable, more livable environment down in the lower section of Hilltop near the park. Thank you.
Anyone else? No?
Want to move it, Ruben?
I would love to move it, even though I'm presiding here. So I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded through council discussion. We are moving right along here.
Trying to make you famous.
Let's vote on it, then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. We could just move right along here. The second item is a first reading ordinance appointing judges for the 2011 city election.
Would like to move it?
Yes, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Maybe you should identify the people that are being selected for those who aren't here. Our TV, real live TV audience.
That's a good idea. So in the ordinance, we identify Theodore Detner, Roberta Kimble, Jeff McGayo, Patricia Shaw, Beverly Toller, Achama Vedamoni. Sorry if I deleted the names. And the city board of elections also serve as judges, and they are Marilyn Abbott, April Kissel, William Lawson, James Roberts, Ann Sargent, and Jose Zambrana. Great, ready to go? Shall we vote? Yes, let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. The third item is a resolution endorsing community development block grant projects. Again, it's an opportunity for public comment. Do we have any public comment on these? Seeing none. Do you want to do a little?
Do you push the button so it's?
It's all on, that's already on.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So you're good to go.
Thanks. The council's being asked to consider this evening a resolution endorsing community development block grant projects that have been recommended by the review committee in the interest of keeping things going. There are six projects that have been recommended for funding. And if you go to the last two pages of your memorandum, I can just go through them quickly, and I understand there may be some questions regarding any specific project. The first is for a commercial kitchen project that was proposed by the Community Park Presbyterian Church. The review committee is recommending $4,000 for a number of food safety classes, which would impact a minimum of eight individuals. They're also recommending Montgomery Housing Partnership's Community Life Program, which would provide preschool homework club and summer enrichment programs for children, preschool up to probably the end of grade school, in an amount of $8,000, with an estimated impact of a minimum of 17 children. And that would be targeted primarily to the residents of Maple Tower, which is here on the corner of Maple and Ritchie Avenue, as well as Gilbert Highlands, which is up in Ward Five. The third project they're proposing funding for is Jump Start Girls, which is a community bridges project targeted for at-risk girls at the Tacoma Park Middle School, and will provide a variety of programming for girls with low-income and immigrant backgrounds. Funding recommendations for that project are six, is $6,000, with a minimum impact of six students from grades six through eight. The next project is recommended for funding is Mission Served Tacoma Park 2012, which was proposed by the District of Columbia Baptist Convention, and that deals with a variety of exterior code abatement activities. And they're recommending $40,000 for materials. Estimated impact on that would be 15 homeowners. That particular project, they'd be working in partnership with the city's Code Enforcement Division to identify properties that may be appropriate, and then we would reach out to those homeowners to see if they're interested in pursuing that as an option and verifying their income at that point. The fifth project they're proposing, recommending, or have recommended for funding is Smart Choices with Emotions, which has been proposed by the YMCA of Metropolitan DC, and that's an amount of $7,000. Again, it's targeted for middle school students here at the Tacoma Park Middle School, who are at risk of suspension or disciplinary action, and they're estimating they can impact six students for, with $7,000 that have been recommended. And the last project that's been proposed for funding is the Tacoma Park Commercial Facade Program, which would provide resources to address a variety of commercial facade improvements in CDBG-eligible areas, which basically includes the Tacoma Junction, the Maryland Gateway, Long Branch, and Tacoma-Langley crossroads area. They're looking at doing an estimated five commercial facades for the sum of $60,000. Basically, what has been done is a total of $125,000 in awards have been recommended. This dollar amount may vary depending upon what the final funding levels are at the federal level, which we won't frankly know until later in the process of the review. Whatever is endorsed by the city council this evening will go to the county. The county staff will review it for eligibility and then forward their recommendations on to the county council for final adoption in FY 13.
I would like to move the...
The move, is there a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Council discussion or questions? I have Josh Wright first, Councilmember Wright.
So my first question is related to the community kitchen. They requested significantly more than we are providing. Is that, can you talk about why that, why we went with such a low number versus what they're requesting? Does some of that have to do with they'd request for capital items and those couldn't be funded based on the location or what the issue is?
The community, the Presbyterian Church initially requested a little over $32,000 for the establishment of a commercial kitchen in the church up on Maple and Tulip. Based on the review, based on the review committee's analysis of the project, it's a little premature to undertake commercial, or excuse me, construction activities for that particular project right now, because they hadn't clearly identified the need and who would be impacted by the project. We have spoken to the folks that pulled together the application, and they agreed. Basically, as they've been going through and investigating or drilling down the process, there are a number of steps that they really need to complete before they can take that next step to redesigning their kitchen. So they're comfortable going ahead and just doing the food safety classes that would be offered at the Food Co-op, and then reapplying the next round for the funds needed to actually do the design work and any related construction activities. Basically, they have to do a lot of homework before they can get to the next step.
Super. My second question has to do with the mission served. They asked for $20,000 or giving them $40,000, or recommending that they get $40,000. And I was just curious why we went that direction, and also wanted to understand, will those be properties that have code violation issues only in certain, the certain census tract that would be seen to be eligible, or are they over the whole city, or what's the?
The way the project has been proposed is that would it be eligible to any low- and moderate-income homeowner that has been cited for a variety of code violations for the exterior property, and would be throughout the entire community. So it's not, it's individual benefit as opposed to an area benefit.
But it has to be an LMI.
But it has to be an LMI individual. So we'll be working closely with them to make sure that the people that are benefiting from the program actually fall within those eligibility criteria. The review committee liked this project and wanted to increase the dollar amount. Their initial request is focused on a one-week blitz, if you will, to get the work done, and then their overall intent is to continue that program throughout the course of the year. So they just, the review committee has recommended additional funding for their program so that they can do it throughout the 12-month period, as opposed to just that individual week. I've chatted with the applicant, and they're comfortable with that. They feel that it's an appropriate dollar amount if you were to go beyond the initial week that was included in their original proposal.
Okay, and then the last question is around the commercial facade program. I know we've done some funding around commercial facade in the areas cited here in the past. Has that money that we've allocated all been used, or is there any concern that this money could sit because there's not, it requires the property owner to, you know, to move forward and to do some match or no match, or what's the?
This particular program is a little different than what the council has, has been implemented to date. Additional funds in a much smaller, or no, additional funds in about $100,000 have been earmarked for this project, but the program hasn't started yet because of the funding cycles. The previous projects that we've been administering have been funded through the Community Legacy Program and have been targeted specifically to the crossroads area and along, throughout all of, or New Hampshire Avenue, and then funding for the old Tacoma, the Main Street area. Those dollars have just come and gone. There has been a great demand for it. So we're hoping that we'll be able to continue that momentum with these dollars in these new targeted areas, because frankly, we haven't been able to spend them in those other areas.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
Councilmember Wright raised most of the issues I had, but I just, I'd wanted clarification on the commercial facade. Are there, is this still a match program, or is it a grant?
It's a match program, so it'd be dollar for dollar.
Okay. And the mission served, you mentioned the week before the holiday, the week before the end of the year as the first.
Their goal is to kick this off and do it basically around the Fourth of July weekend, or that week.
This coming Fourth of July?
That's their goal. We're going to try and make that happen.
Okay. And the timing, I kind of forget the CDBG timing, but is that, is that a reasonable period to get the monies to them?
I've started a conversation with the county, and I'm hopeful that we can make it.
Okay, I remember a long lead time.
There's been a long lead time, and they've been working with us to sort of shorten that lead, because quite frankly, it's frustrating for everybody.
Of course.
And have been doubling up on cycles and doing them under a single contract. So I'm hoping that we can continue to do that.
Okay, and the final one is for the food safety classes. That's food safety classes for people who are going to do food prep, I take it.
It's targeting for a variety of things. It's folks that will want, that want to do value-added to, value-added food products, either folks that are participating in the farmer's market and want to take their tomatoes and turn them into salsa, as well as people that would work for folks that are doing value-added.
Right, I see. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Isn't it true that the proposal for the commercial kitchen, the food service, that that's all going to be done for Spanish-speaking people?
It's not, my understanding that it's standing that it's limited to just Spanish speakers.
Okay.
It's not, it was not an element of their application, and there undoubtedly will be Spanish speakers involved.
Oh, okay, oh, that's not an element. I thought that it was. I guess I was just misinformed on that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I know that the crossroads, farmer's market was a strong advocate participant, I think, in this, in this particular request. Am I not right on that?
Yes, if you recall during the public hearing, there were a number of individuals representing the Food Co-op, the church, and the crossroads that all spoken in support of this particular project.
And, so what you're basically saying, I just want to really be clear on this, is that, that the $4,000 we're giving to them, or proposing to give to them, assuming the county goes along with it, is really about all that they're ready to handle or take in right now, based on the stage or where they are in terms of planning and building out this, this commercial kitchen?
That was the position of the review committee, and the applicant agreed.
Mm-hmm. So they'll be coming back?
My sense is that they'll be coming back. We've also given them some encouragement to look for additional funding, which they're doing, and if the city opens up some additional, if additional grant funds have become available within the city, then we'll encourage them to apply for those funds as well.
I see.
But you will undoubtedly see an application the next go-around with block grant funds for the actual kitchen itself.
Which would probably be another year from now.
Correct.
Okay. Mission Served Tacoma Park, the applicant's District of Columbia Baptist Convention. Can you kind of elaborate a little bit on who this, who this organization is and where they are, you know, where they come from? Obviously, it sounds a little bit like it's an organization that started in the District of Columbia.
Baptists are everywhere, from what I've been told.
Even on the council?
Even on the council. I didn't know that.
I did not know that.
Never asked, which is why I don't know. Mission Served is sort of an arm of the Baptist Convention, and they've done work throughout the country on similar projects like this. So when you look at their resume and their marketing materials, they've done similar projects in Georgia, Alabama, have done things in North Carolina, and are hoping to bring those programs up to this part of the world. So they'll be, they're talking to other folks in Virginia and other people in Maryland. We gave them some contact information in Rockville and a variety of other places.
So they have a really good track record?
From what I can tell, I'm quite impressed. They've been working with some communities since 2006, using block grant funds for similar types of projects. In my family's personal experience with projects like this, is that it's really very effective on a variety of levels, so I'm hopeful that it'll work here as well.
And all this work would be done for homes, properties inside of Tacoma Park?
It would have to be inside Tacoma Park, and the individuals would have to be low- and moderate-income individuals. The one thing I want to make sure everyone understands is that there may be some projects where the applicant, the homeowner really could use a whole lot of help, but it's just too big a deal, too extensive a project for them to handle, given that they'll be working with a lot of volunteers as far as the actual work itself. While every project is overseen by a construction specialist, and there will be people on each team that are professional contractors or do work on renovations, there may be some projects that will be just too large for them to handle.
So you've got, you estimate 15 homeowners. That would be roughly between $2,500 and $3,000 per... That would be roughly between $2,500 and $3,000 per project on the average. Some would be more, some would be less.
And that's just for materials?
That's just for material. Is the labor subsidized? Or is the labor, like the Christmas in April labor?
Basically, the labor is donated or people pay to work on these projects. They're volunteers.
Okay. I just have, on the commercial facade program, I want to be clear. The Community Legacy Program, it still is in existence. It's just changed its name. It's under a different title, I think, in the state of Maryland. But is there funds available now or in the future for the Community Legacy as we have known it to continue to provide money to our city aside from this particular grant?
Yes.
There is?
And that ties back to the next agenda item.
Okay. Okay. So, this is basically an enhancement to that program to allow us to do work in parts of the city that previously we've just not been able to do.
Right. It'll look, frankly, it'll look different. It won't be a loan or a grant. It will be facade easement. So, essentially, you're buying an easement at the front of the building. Though what you're doing is reimbursing the property owner or rather than paying the property owner or giving the property owner grant funds, you're buying the easement. So, it's gonna look different, but it's basically the same net result.
Could you say more just on that last point? When you say it's gonna look different, what do you, you don't mean visually?
The structure will look different. When you actually look at the building, it will be the same.
Right.
Yeah. And it has a lot to do with the way the, the CDBG program is, is regulated.
But, as I understand it, CDBG can only work on the exteriors. You can't get into the businesses themselves. And it allows, you can provide architectural and design services with that to help the people figure out how they're gonna remodel the facades of their storefronts. Is that right?
I don't believe the block grant program limits the use of block grant funds on the interior of any commercial structure. But given the capacity that we have as an organization, we don't have a rehab specialist on staff. We don't have a variety of other things. Plus, if you use federal funds for construction activities, it can potentially increase the cost of the project because whatever money goes into that project, regardless of its funding source, is treated as federal money. And it creates additional administrative concerns on my part, but also additional paperwork and documentation on the part of the property owner.
I don't have any other questions.
Anyone else? Good. Ready to vote? In favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? As passed as unanimous. Excellent. We'll move into our work session, which is a discussion of the draft sustainability community plan for submission to the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you.
Do you want to do a little intro?
You're gonna get me all, all lit. Joining me on this one is Linda Walker, who is our housing manager in the HCD department.
Earlier this year, the state of Maryland reaffirmed its commitment to the revitalization of communities like Tacoma Park and its commitment to environmental sustainability when they adopted the Sustainable Communities Act. And basically, what that does or is intended to do is to encourage communities to work together, to identify priorities and strategies for ensuring the economic vitality of the community, the livability of various communities for its inhabitants, and to embrace sustainable development practices, et cetera. It's a new program and it involves applying to the state of Maryland to become designated as a sustainable community so that the city of Tacoma Park and other communities like Tacoma Park can access resources like the Community Legacy Program. Without being designated as a sustainable community, it limits our ability to access Community Legacy Funds, some state highway administration credits, historic preservation and job creation tax credits, sidewalk retrofit funds, and other NIMDOT projects would not be allowed to be done in our community unless we are designated a sustainable community. So, that being said, Tacoma Park is currently considered a sustainable community by default. We are considered a Community Legacy community and that designation is just temporary and expires at the end of June of 2012. There have been a, there are a variety of application dates, but we're hoping that we can meet the January deadline. And I'm coming to the council now because of a variety of meeting schedules and staffing calendars and things like that, to get your input on how to proceed with this particular application. And then we'll be coming back to you in roughly two weeks, I believe, with the resolution allowing us to proceed with the application and submitting it to the state for consideration. There are a couple of things that I'd like to point out and to get some feedback from the council on is the Sustainable Communities area, excuse me, and this is on the second page of the, of the memo. We're proposing that the area that we include in our application contain all of the city of Tacoma Park as well as those areas that are in Montgomery County and Prince George's County that are included in the sector plan and the New Hampshire Avenue concept plan. It doesn't mean that city funds would be spent in those areas, but it gives those jurisdictions the ability to apply for Community Legacy Funds and all of the other programs that I indicated for this particular effort to revitalize that area and redevelopment or redevelop certain sections of the crossroads area as well as other areas along New Hampshire Avenue. We have reached out and spoken to those jurisdictions and they're supportive of the application and will continue to work with them to incorporate them in this process if the council supports that approach. We're also looking at the Community, Sustainable Communities Action Plan, which is fairly involved and is intended to provide a flexible, multi-year approach to redevelopment and revitalization within this plan area that again, address economics, vitality, livability, and sustainability issues that are important to the community. The last two pages of the memorandum identify those particular bullet points within the application that we have to include in the action plan. What we have done is culled from all the different plans and reports and task force recommendations and everything like that that have been adopted by the city council or the county council in the last five years and sort of grouped them into general categories. So, we're, because there are so many things going on and because we don't want to limit ourselves to just three particular projects or five particular projects, and because there's also a character limitation on the plan itself, we have tried to be fairly broad in the recommendations that we've identified here as bullet points.
What, there's a what kind of limitation, did you say?
The answers to all of these questions have to be 4,000 characters or less.
Character.
Yeah. Which sounds like a lot, but when you're actually writing something, it gets to be problematic. So, and I appreciate their not, their interest in keeping things succinct and not having to read pages and volumes of applications. But it does require us to be fairly broad in our, the actions that will be included in this action plan. So, we have done, for example, under the category of existing communities and reducing environmental impacts, attempted to reinforce the fact that the council and the community are interested in continued reinvestment in existing neighborhoods, be they commercial or residential, are looking at some of the task force recommendations that were included in the report that the council saw several years, months ago. Under valuing communities and neighborhood, we're looking at protecting historic resources, integrating new and existing development, and enhancing the natural environment by increasing the tree canopy, type, those types of activities. Under enhancing economic competitiveness and access to economic opportunity, we're including language, for example, that includes creation of partnerships to enhance access to financing, training, counseling, marketing, et cetera, to businesses and individuals in an effort to have them prosper in a green and sustainable way. Under equitable access to high-quality affordable housing, Linda's gone through and identified four bullet points, which include the development of quality and affordable housing options and the preservation and maintenance of housing through code enforcement activities. And then in the last bullet point regarding transportation efficiency and access, that's where we deal with some of the pedestrian bike-friendly streetscapes, the reconstruction of New Hampshire Avenue corridor as a multiway boulevard, and implementation for a variety of projects that include, prove access to transportation projects. So, those types of things would be included in the action plan. Based on that quick and dirty summary in the bullet points that are included in the memorandum, are we missing anything?
You're asking us.
Yeah. It's, it is deliberately broadly written and kind of vague, I will admit, but basically, what we've tried to do is to take recommendations from a variety of different plans and synthesize them. The language needs to be worked, reworked a bit to make it flow with the actual application. But we've tried to cover everything from capacity building and the part of the residency of Tacoma Park to the fiscal and environmental sustainability priorities of the strategy plan as well as the recommendations of the task force on environmental sustainability. But it's not quite good enough.
I think I have a question which might help me answer the, your question. What's the process here? Is it sort of perfunctory? We need to submit a plan as long as it's like reasonable, the plan gets approved and then we're eligible for these dollars going forward? And if we don't mention something in the plan, does that mean we can't get dollars for an item from one of these sources to be used on some issue if it's not mentioned specifically in the plan?
It's somewhere in the middle of all of that. I spoke with the staff for the state and was giving them a bad time about, okay, so I'll just submit something and you'll approve it, right? That's not their intent. So, whatever projects are identified by the council in future years, we need to be able to fit under one of these categories and one of these responses. Again, which is why it's kind of vague. We can go through and amend the plan and their intent is to have that happen every five years. If it happens more often than that, I'm assuming it will be okay, but I haven't seen anything that allows for that provision at this point.
And do we risk this idea that we're gonna expand something beyond our boundaries, which I think is a good idea because many of these issues are cross-cutting and we might want to work with other entities related to them? Does that in any way weaken our proposal or would it mean that it might not get approved?
Actually, I think it would enhance the application because they are really looking at people taking a comprehensive approach to their community. And while in many areas, following the corporate or municipal lines is really important and relevant, because we are basically a suburban-urban area and we have these streets that are on one side of Prince George's and the other side of Montgomery County and/or Tacoma Park, they're really looking at how we're working together to address the redevelopment concerns in those areas. So, when we initially proposed this to the folks at the state who are providing us guidance on this, they thought it was a very good idea to do that. I think it will enhance our request for additional funding, particularly along New Hampshire Avenue because it will, because it does recognize that there are multiple jurisdictions involved and impacted by any projects that are done along that stretch.
And then, is the Sustainability Communities, Sustainable Communities Work Group, is that supposed to be articulated in the action plan or is that...
We're supposed to include that in the action, or it's part of the application, it's not part of the action plan. The original intent, because frankly, we found this to be confusing. I sent a number of staff members to the various training and they all came back with different answers. So, what we've been able to determine at this point is that the goal of the state is to make sure that people are talking to one another. Apparently, there are some jurisdictions where the Hall of Works Department never talks to the housing office, which never talks to other people that might be involved. So, their focus is primarily on internal communications within the jurisdiction that is submitting the plan, but also including entities that they work primarily with. Our observation has been that the state in recent years has been focusing on the Main Street program. So, if you've noticed any of the applications that are coming through, it goes through initially through the Main Street Tacoma program and then ends up in our lap, if you will. So, we're proposing to include Main Street Tacoma in this initial work group as well as representatives from Prince George's County and Montgomery County. Other parties would get involved as we go through and they become involved in the specific, implementation of specific projects that are included in the action plan. The work group could also expand over the, over time as the council's emphasis changes on what areas you want to focus on for funding requests and things like that.
Seems like, I appreciate that we have the Main Street Tacoma group in there. It also seems like we should have the crossroads.
We had talked about having the...
Development, whatever the name is.
Crossroads makes a lot of sense. And we can add them to that. Right now, the current executive director is stepping down November 1st. There is not...
December 31st.
Oh, so he's retiring before he steps down.
He's having a going-away party.
A going-away party, excuse me. We can include the crossroads in the area, in the, in the initial work plan.
Okay. I mean, I think you've, you've captured the big buckets. When you get into the specific policies, I'm not sure if we have everything covered, but I also realize you have some limit on this number of characters, so...
How many characters do we have left?
I don't know yet. We haven't, we haven't gone through and, we haven't gone through and drawn...
I bet Jake was there.
Yeah. And frankly, this is just our first blush, is first going through it and pulling out stuff that we thought accurately reflected broadly the priorities of the city council. There will be additional wordsmithing. There may be additional language added to make sure that we cover it all through as we go through our second round and actually start writing the application.
My only thought, my only thing that jumped to mind was whether the things that came up in the shrap, the New Hampshire shrap, the way we'd really like New Hampshire shrap to look from eastern up to Fort Tannet, basically, is that really captured in here?
In a broad kind of way, yeah. Between the multiway boulevard, the sustainable development efforts, I think there was another phrase in here, integration in new and existing development, public art, the pedestrian and bicycle access. I think we do, it's just, it's not gonna come right out at you if you're looking at it initially.
I don't have any other questions.
Councilmember Robinson?
There's something, there's another effort called Sustainable Maryland that is only for, is focused towards municipalities. And I guess I'm, I know enough about that that I don't think it would be, even though it has almost the same name, and I was confused at first, I don't see a lot of overlap, but I do wonder if you've looked at the Sustainable Maryland information, which is somewhat voluminous. It's based on sustainable communities in New Jersey and they have a large...
Listen?
Well, yeah, there's a checklist with about 50, 50 elements on it.
Yeah.
And we're part of that now, so I don't know if that would offer any hints to the, to this list as you go into your second trial.
Okay.
So, that's one, one issue or one item and then the other is just, is wordsmithing. But on the third, third point of supporting, of supporting existing communities and reducing environmental impacts, you don't mention reduction of greenhouse gas, so you might throw greenhouse gas monitoring and reduction, comma, energy efficiency upgrades, et cetera. You might throw that in there.
Okay. Okay.
Councilmember Schultz?
First question is, it's a part of the very first paragraph.
Robinson.
Yes, thank you. You say that the, this program, the Sustainability Community Act, is directed towards older communities, such as Tacoma Park. What is the, what, how does the state define the older communities? I mean, but how many different cities or municipalities, I guess, are in this area? Is it just mostly the smaller cities in the state or?
They, it's anything that's considered a priority community right now, which is basically inside the Beltway. And, but not limited to inside the Beltway, so I know that there are other communities all over the state that have community legacy, or legacy status, as well as priority area status. How they define older communities, I don't know.
Okay. Well, obviously, we're in, that's all that really matters, but I was just curious about that. I just wanted to see if I can't get a better understanding. It seems to me that this Sustainability Community Act is designed to kind of reorder or reconfigure how the state funds programs at the local level in these so-called priority communities, trying to create an umbrella, a bigger or more defined umbrella of who's eligible, and try and get everything in under that umbrella, rather than having all these multiple programs that are administered in different ways by different agencies under different programs. Am I, is that the kind of, the gist of it?
I don't, I don't believe they're looking at eliminating any programs, they're looking at using this as a way to target available resources. So for example, the community legacy program will remain in place, but those funds would only be able to be expended in sustainable community areas.
Targeting is the thing.
Yeah. Recognizing that the state, like many jurisdictions, have increasingly limited resources, where best to invest those.
In reference to the Crossroads Development Authority, this, the thing that you, your draft has on the, I guess it's the third item, enhancing economic competitiveness, I mean, that, it is long, as you know, but not everybody necessarily knows, Sarah, originally the, a commercial management district was, had been proposed, this going back quite a number of years, for all four corners of the Crossroads area, and because of political reasons, it got pretty much reduced down to just being Tacoma Park side of it. And what I'm seeing here may be an opportunity to perhaps create a new, larger organization, or perhaps modify the Crossroads Development Authority so that it has, covers larger territory, I don't know, I don't really care at this point, so that we can actually have an entity that covers the Prince George's side and there'd be much more cooperation and coordination between the two counties with the future redevelopment of both the Prince George's sector plan and the Tacoma Langley sector plan. Is that something that you're thinking of, the Sustainable Communities Act could help address, since it is cross-jurisdictional?
Not specifically the jurisdictional limitations of the CDA as it currently exists.
Why, it would have to be changed.
But it would reinforce the importance of working cooperatively on specific projects or programs.
Right.
Because I believe right now, the way the CDA is delineated has more to do with the state, the state law that requires individual actions by impacted jurisdictions and doesn't necessarily allow specifically for multi-jurisdictional CDAs.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll see how that goes and learn more about that later. I think the last question I had was on the, the work group, it mentions various departments here in the city. In addition, it says to representatives from Montgomery and PG County and Main Street Tacoma, representatives, would they be just citizens at large?
Initially, I think we will focus on staff because of their awareness and involvement in existing plans and programs that are already in place. What we're hoping to do is build on all the work that has already been developed with the input from the community and at least get the ball rolling at this point.
Okay. I think it would be good at some point to make room for.
Right, and that's the intent.
Okay, okay. I think that's all I wanted to ask at this point.
I had a question. Could you talk a little bit about how the, if we include these areas outside Tacoma Park, which I think is a great idea, how will the sort of operation of that work, will they be partnerships with county or other local groups or?
Could be any, it could be anything.
Could be any of them.
However, whatever may be most appropriate for that particular project or that particular program.
Okay. I think it's a terrific idea. The other question I had concerned the work group, I think it's a terrific idea to have different departments. It does seem like there might be other stakeholders who would be useful to have on it.
There are many, many stakeholders, and we are more than glad.
There are, I mean, as you know, Tacoma Park's, Jack Bullabum, so there will, at some point, we'll have to develop a process for who gets on and why and that sort of thing, and I assume you're starting to think about how that, how that process might work.
How many people do we have on our preliminary? We have twenty-five to thirty people on the preliminary list as far as stakeholders that could be on this, on the work group. So yeah, we're very open to expanding it as we go through this process.
Do you have any idea what the state is thinking about for, for this? For instance, their, one option would be to have representatives from each ward, just a, something that's not, not listed here, as a way of getting public input on these projects. Does the state indicated any sort of ideas for what they thought the work group would be?
When we chatted with them to clarify how they define the work group, their primary focus was on the internal operations of the applicant. Again, making sure that departments talk to each other.
That's fine, sure.
So that's their, their initial focus.
Their initial focus.
But to make this an effective planning tool, it will be appropriate and important to bring a variety of people into the conversation. And the reality is, we're probably going to end up doing that anyway as we go through and develop this application to bring in folks from like MHP, for example, which has a vested interest not only in the affordable housing sector, but are doing work up in Long Branch and your neck of the woods for business recruitment and expansion.
I was actually one of the ones, I was thinking.
They're on our list, yeah.
Cool. And then I had one, I assume it's a typo, on the first page of the cover sheet, you have the application deadline, sort of two-thirds of the way down.
It's 2012.
Yeah, I assumed that was 2012.
Thank you. I'm feeling really far behind, but not that far.
Right, right, no, I, you know, didn't want to be late. Great, are there any other council comments, questions? Do you have what you need?
I have what we need, and we'll be coming back to you on the 24th of this month with the resolution, a draft which is included in your packet.
Yeah, I did, I did have a question on the draft, since you're going to come back to it, in the now-there-for-it-be-resolved section. I guess it isn't necessar, the designation is Tacoma Park as a sustainable community, you don't have to indicate something about it will include adjacent areas because that's done in one of the warays.
No, I should add, yeah, I will add that in there.
Somehow phrased appropriately, right. I mean, it's the city that gets designated, but we want to make sure that.
Correct.
Right, okay.
That's just an oversight.
Great, we have a scheduled break, or we could just.
I'll be trying to wrap up before the mayor comes back.
Keep rolling, okay. I'm good with that myself. The next item is an update on the Tacoma-Langley Sector Plan.
And this will be short because.
Oh, don't leave.
Yeah, really, did we scare you off? Hope not.
This is confusing, or I find it confusing, in that I start crossing over at certain points, but what I want to do is just give you a general sense of where we're at with all things related to the Tacoma Park, or the Tacoma-Langley Sector Plan. If you recall from past discussions, this, over the course of the last year, there are three basic actions that are being taken or considered by the Planning Board or the County Council that will have an impact on Councilmember Ward's short, Ward, ah, Councilmember Schultz's ward, on basically the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads area. There's the Sector Plan, which incorporates within the document the urban design guidelines, and also, once approved, would establish new zones in the New Hampshire Avenue and University Boulevard area, and those are the CR zones. A couple of weeks ago, the council, in reaction to the urban design guidelines that were being proposed by the Planning Board, adopted two resolutions, one of which requested that the County Council delay any action on the adoption of the Tacoma Sector Plan until such time as the council's concerns regarding the urban design guidelines, which we believed were vaguely written, have been addressed. There was also a resolution that you adopted requesting that the Planning Board not approve the urban design guidelines, again, because they were overly vague and were felt not to be very helpful in terms of guiding any redevelopment in, in the area. So as a result, there's no planned discussion of the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads Sector Plan until the urban design guidelines issue has been resolved. I thought it was going to be on the agenda in the next couple of weeks, though in chatting with Councilmember Irving's staff this afternoon, it has been pulled until such time as the urban design guidelines have been addressed, and based on conversations with Roland Stanley, who's the director of the Planning Department, that's not going to happen for several weeks at a minimum, so there's been no formal action placed on the County Council's agenda for the foreseeable future. So nothing is going to be happening with the Sector Plan until the urban design guidelines are addressed. And I was hoping that we might be able to do that in the next month, but that doesn't appear to be the case. The urban design guidelines were to be considered by the county or the Planning Board on October 6th, but they were pulled from the agenda, again, based on the resolution that was adopted by the City Council, and they are, have not been placed back on the Planning Board's agenda for this foreseeable future. There will be a discussion of the urban design guidelines on October 13th, and that is described as being a.
Briefing?
Philosophical conversation of the intent of the urban design guidelines, the relationship between urban design and master plans, and the role the design guidelines should play in the development process, et cetera.
A briefing.
What they're doing is they're bringing.
Consultants from California wrote them.
They're bringing in, and I am mispronouncing his name, Ruin Jan, who is the gentleman that has been involved in the development of the various guidelines, to talk to the Planning Board about how they should be structured, again, their role, what place they have, and to provide some guidance at the Planning Board level for the urban design guidelines. Later on that same agenda, there will be a conversation about the design guidelines, actually a work session for the guidelines for Kensington as well as Wheaton, but not Tacoma Park. So that will be.
Are we off of the 27th?
We're not on anywhere, as far as I can tell, no. So the urban design guidelines are in limbo, which has an impact on the Sector Plan, and I'm not anticipating anything happening or shaking out on either of those items for at least a month. And well, the challenge with this particular thing is that information changes every fifteen minutes, and frankly, it depends on who you're chatting with at the time, and then we'll ask a question, they'll give us an answer, but then they'll also verify with someone else, and they'll call us back, and the answer is different. The one thing I do know for sure is that the CR zones are being, the County Council is planning to act on the zoning text amendment for the CR zones tomorrow at roughly 10 o'clock, when they'll be convening a, it's a district council, and they'll be going through, and I believe formalizing their support for a series of amendments that were proposed by Councilmember Florine, and some additional amendments that were approved by members of the Fed Committee, which, from our analysis of them, either have no impact on Tacoma Park or are positive. So in the grand scheme of things, the modifications that have taken place over a course of time through the Fed Committee with input primarily from Mayor Williams and Councilmember Schultz have had a positive impact on what was originally proposed for the zone, which would have an impact on redevelopment in the Crossroads area. I can give you more specific information as long as you don't drill down too far, but that's kind of what I understand right now. No action on anyone's agenda for the Sector Plan, no formal action anticipated for the urban design guidelines for some time, but the Sector, or the ZTA for the, or the CR Zone will be finalized, I believe, tomorrow.
Let me just add one thing that you may or may not have covered since I came in as you were talking. I had a conversation with Council President Irvin last week, where she basically said we were trying to get the Sector, the Tacoma-Langley Sector Plan done before the end of this calendar year, but given your concerns about the design guidelines, shall, should we stick with that schedule, should we go ahead and press and finish with the Sector Plan, or should we wait for some attempt at a resolution on the design guidelines before going forward with the Sector Plan? And I said, please, we need to have some conversations about the design guidelines because they're all interrelated, because if we don't get what we want there, then we're going to be coming to you with potential changes in the Sector Plan, and if you're not going to put them in the Sector Plan, then we need to talk to you about overlay zones, we know you don't want to do those, but they're all related, so yes, I guess you'd need, in spite of the fact that this has been dragging on for years, we need you to delay, and she said, okay, she would move Wheaton ahead of Tacoma-Langley for the Sector Plan, and therefore, there would be no getting back to the Tacoma-Langley Sector Plan until after they had dealt with Wheaton, and I said, can you give me a sense of timeframe? And she said, that means not before the first of the year. And I'll just take the opportunity to say, I'm glad I made it for a little bit of the meeting, sorry I missed the beginning of the meeting, the Silver Spring Community Advisory Board had been after me and others from. The Silver Spring Community Advisory Board had been after me and others from Tacoma Park to come talk to them about Tacoma Park and how we interact with Silver Spring. The Advisory Board covers the area of Montgomery County inside the Beltway plus four corners. They have been active for many years, and this was the first opportunity where they had invited Tacoma Park to come talk with them about common issues and about what makes Tacoma Park special. And so, I was there, Kathy Porter was there, and Bruce Moyer, president of Westmoreland Area Community Organization, was there. And they're going to be joined in two weeks by members of the business community, including Roz Grigsby and somebody, somebody from the Tacoma Langley CDA, and they're also going to have an opportunity to meet with our Neighborhood Association representatives, and I understand Ms. Daines gave them contact information for them.
Right.
So, there's going to be plenty of opportunity for Silver Spring and Tacoma Park to talk about areas of common interest and how we might work together. And I brought brochures.
We missed you.
Anything else on the update? I guess we were simple.
I have a question. So, so there will be delay.
There will be delay.
Okay. Can we think about what we might do during the delay to move the County Council in directions we would like? You know, I read Councilmember Schultz's letter and couldn't agree more with it, so I wondered if there are things that you need from the council? We have been pretty clear on where we want to go.
You guys woke up a couple of people with our correspondence.
Good.
I think right now, and the mayor and Councilmember Schultz may, can correct me, but I believe the emphasis right now is on the Planning Board and the planning staff as far as resolving what, what the purpose of the urban design guidelines are and how important it is for them to be specific to, to the area that they are supposed to be addressing, the concerns of the community and the interest in continued reinvestment in that area.
And also, the desire to have some public input during the process, not to skip that point of view. I mean, that's one of the priorities.
There are a variety, there are a variety of concerns.
Yes, there are a variety of concerns, and we've discussed them extensively. Okay, great.
Yeah, I think, unless I'm wrong, that's where a majority of the focus or emphasis was going to be in the next month or two.
Right. Thank you.
It wasn't too long, it wasn't too long ago that the County Council and the Planning Board were of the mind that it would be really nice, neat package if they could adopt the CR zoning text amendments, the Sector Plans, and the Urban Design Guideline components simultaneously. And as long as they were cooperating with, with the points that the city, our city was in favor of, that was fine with us. But that all, that sort of understanding has unraveled over the last few months. So, where I, so where we are now, of course, is that tomorrow, it looks like they're going to put the final nail into the CR ZTAs. I don't think that there's much room there at all for us to gain maneuverability in the next few hours. Is anybody from here planning to be attending that meeting at all? Because I, I have no plans to do that, you know?
Carmen Lamb will be at that meeting, but I'm not sure about any of the councilmen.
So, be that as it's may, at least, but basically, the, the decision about the powers that be in the county to postpone the Sector Plan and the Urban Design Guideline discussions is good. That's good news, and I won't, I'm saying this because we know this, and I want people who are listening to this to understand that, particularly the folks in my ward, that this buys us more time. I wish that we didn't need to buy more time, because as you may know, I was, we were all talking about getting this wrapped up last July before summer recess. So, here we are, six months further down the road, and as, as a new target for, for getting this thing done. To respond to Councilmember Snippers' question, I think that the, the County Council and the Planning Board have heard us, of our correspondence that we've, we sent a couple weeks ago, which I, and citizen letters from residents, kind of joining in and indicating from the citizen point of view that they are also very supportive of exactly what the city wants, I think will help, help people get the idea that, you know, that this is something that's really the right, the right thing to do in terms of amending the, changing the whole format of the urban design guidelines so that they actually have some substance to them that will be of, of value to residents in our neighborhoods, particularly adjacent to the urban area, and to developers. Because it's very odd, you know, developers were, you know, horrified by the idea of the urban design guides going into the master plan, but when they thought that there wasn't going to be any urban design guidelines in the master plan, or in the urban design guidelines, that those would be so vague, they thought that was great, because that would give them the most liberty at all, of all, to kind of use maximum discretion and put it to build what they want to build. And that's, that's a telltale warning sign that they're not, that things are going too far in that direction. And that's not to say we are still not very interested in incentivizing developers to come into Tacoma Langley, you know, current property owners or whoever, to redevelop, because that's what we want. But we think that if the urban design guidelines are written reasonably, that we will not discourage the developers, and then in fact, this would set a little bit of sort of like discipline for the whole process, which would be healthy for them as well as for the community. I hope that makes sense, but this is what we've been working on for a really long time, and a lot of us on staff, and Bruce and I have been talking, working back channels on this thing, and like you were saying, Sarah, it's been changing every 15 minutes. So, I don't pretend to know exactly what's going on from any one day to the next, but Bruce and I have been talking an awful lot on this, and a lot of Blanchard has just been doing a terrific job.
Yes. We've, we've been managing to, among us all, cover everything that is happening and providing constant input from Tacoma Park.
And I hope you don't give a lot of the cold...
No, I, I try to stay away from her.
Anything else on this item?
Oh, I just wanted to say that the supplement here, if I can, if I can add to this, to the discussion here orally, is that in, yes, the Sunday Metro Section, there were two articles that were, had to do an awful lot with Tacoma Park. Terrell North's op-ed piece in the Metro Section on the, on the concerns about the loss of affordable housing through this whole Sector Plan planning process, and a article by, or a column by Robert McCartney, who's a regular there, of course, questioning the process for how the CR zoning text amendments have been drafted and proposed. Both of them were well-written, and I think made some valid points, but it just seemed to me that somebody from the actual, from the city of Tacoma Park needed to put all of that, those two items into context, and so I prepared and drafted a letter, which I sent to the Washington Post yesterday, trying to summarize what I thought was the city of Tacoma Parks, which happens to be my own personal point of view as well, as to what it was we were fighting about. And I thought if I could say something that would simplify it, make it cogent, which is inherently against the way I do things, as you know, that it would, it would help shed light on the whole process. And so, that's what's being passed out here as a copy of this, of this letter to the editor. Of course, I have no idea whether the Washington Post will ever publish it. In their infinite wisdom, who knows? So, that's why that is here.
Good, thank you. Anything else? Going once, going twice?